Hi, this is Liz. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great.
So we're just waiting for Catherine. And then Terrence is going to be a couple of minutes late, correct? Oh, there's Catherine, okay.
Hi, everyone.
Catherine.
Hey, everybody. Okay, terrific. So I think we are ready to begin, correct?
Liz is in the attendees still.
She's with us by phone. Okay, terrific. Thank you so much. It's great to see everybody. Really appreciate that we could come together. Somewhat unexpectedly, it's Thursday, February 4th. And I'm going to make a motion for us to, or maybe just perhaps call to order. I think it's just called to order. Thank you, Kim. And I guess as is our custom, if everybody would please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States.
Republic which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for joining us, Kristin. It's nice to see you. And thank you, Andrew, for the coordination behind the scenes to bring the board and the community up to date. I know we've received some new guidance in the past forty-eight hours and then twenty-four hours. And we're looking forward to hearing from you. I don't think there are any comments or announcements beforehand, so I'll just turn the floor over to you if that's okay.
Sure. Thanks, Marjorie. And I'm just going to give a little bit of context, hopefully not too much. And then make a recommendation to the board. For those who might not know, at the end of last week, Governor Cuomo approved what are known as high, what were then known as high-risk sports. They've now seemed to become known as higher-risk sports. For moving ahead, he said at the very beginning of February, they could start if local departments of health were willing to give their approval for the go-ahead. It wasn't very long after that that Westchester County initially indicated seemingly giving the go-ahead also for sports to continue, but there was some acknowledgement that there was still guidance pending from the local departments of health. It was a little bit unclear as to whether we were still waiting for guidance or not, but in fact, that guidance did come just on Tuesday night of this week. About eight o'clock in the evening, guidance came out. And it was fairly stringent guidance with quite a number of requirements, some of which we did not, we didn't have, hadn't been given any reason to anticipate prior to that. So we obviously read through it all as quickly and as thoroughly as we could on Tuesday night. And then started to communicate with our families on Wednesday morning. Some of those requirements would have actually made it quite difficult to get started quickly with the sports because of some new physical requirements for student athletes to complete. So anyway, we were working through those things. And then this morning, the guidance was revised. We learned that this morning, there was now a change made, reducing the requirement about new physicals for athletes, the physicals that they had in place could actually serve now for the higher risk unless the athletes had contracted COVID since the time of their last physical, and then there is still a requirement to get a new physical. It's interesting in reading through the guidance, how filled with warnings it is. It's somewhat unusual. You could almost read the guidance and think that it was going to end by announcing that Westchester County was not approving high-risk winter sports, but in fact, it ended with them saying the decision is now up to local districts and, in fact, to individual families who are going to be asked to sign off on a code of conduct. Acknowledging some of the increased risks as well as promising to follow all the rules and guidelines that a, that a school district puts in place. And we are mandated to get those new codes of conduct out to every student athlete who will be participating to keep signed records on file so that if and when the county asks to see them, we should have them available. So pretty stringent requirements from the county and still a green light to go ahead if school districts feel they can put the conditions in place. You know, in my thinking about this, and as I think back over the last year almost of this pandemic, there have been many things, I think, that haven't seemed entirely logically coherent. If you look at them through just one perspective. And there seem to be contradictions at times, and I think it would be very fair for people to say it looks the current situation seems a little bit contradictory. We still don't have all children back in school, but we're considering moving ahead with these higher-risk sports. But I think one of the lessons over the last year has been that it's, it's maybe not possible, or maybe not wise, to look only through a single perspective at anything. If, if we were looking strictly through a public health and safety lens, there probably wouldn't have been sports this fall. The truth is, we might not even be in school. If we were looking strictly to minimize physical health and safety risk, then like a lot of school districts around the country, we, we might still be closed and be a fully remote school district. But I think we've learned in the past year that it's, it's a risk and reward environment where we try to weigh and balance the risks and the rewards. And we made that calculation with school opening. Where there are certainly plenty of studies that point to the importance of children being able to continue their academics in person. And there are plenty of studies that talk about the social emotional well-being for children, a very important factor. And so we consider that perspective in addition to the physical health and safety perspective, and we try to strike a balance. And I think, I think we've tried really hard throughout the year to take both sides of any equation in, into factor and, and make a decision that's that balances the two, the two tensions. And I think that's the situation we find ourselves in again now. As I said a minute ago, the county very clearly spells out that there are some increased risks, more so in some sports than in others. More so in general for indoor sports, but then even more so for some sports that occur indoors than others. And they ask us to make a decision. On, on the other side of the equation, we know how important participating in these activities is for many, for the, for those students who do participate. And not just in sports, but in lots of activities. We know that their social emotional health, their well-being is in many cases tied into the ability to continue to participate. So that's, that's what we're trying to strike a balance here. If you, if the board was asking me strictly from a physical health and well-being, would I be recommending that we move forward with sports? I would probably say no. But if I balance the two, and if I acknowledge that for some students, this is really important. And if, you know, with the understanding that the county is not saying, the county health department and the state health department are both not saying, no, these things shouldn't happen. I don't know that I want to be the one to say, no, they shouldn't happen, again, knowing that the potential reward for our students. Having said that, there, there, as I said a minute ago, there are still some more risk calculations for some sports than for others, but now I don't want to drone on for too long. So the sports in question here for us are ice hockey, wrestling, and basketball. We don't offer competitive cheerleading, which is the other winter sport that's in the higher-risk category. And my recommendation to the board, and, and the reason, just to be very explicit for the community, part of the county health department requirement is that school districts make a very explicit statement about which sports they're approving and which sports they're not. So my recommendation tonight, and then, and I do want to clarify it, so I'm going to say it first, but then I'm going to add a caveat. My recommendation is that we put all three sports in a resolution that says we're moving forward. Which means basketball, ice hockey, and wrestling. And then as well, now is when I want to make the more difficult statement for our students involved in wrestling. Because wrestling is singled out in the county's guidance in a way that the other sports are not. And I think very clearly it's singled out because of the increased physical contact of the sport. The guidance documents speak to that, increasing the risk. And because of the fact that guidance from the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends that students not wear masks when they wrestle because of other health risks that that would create. So this, this creates a very real tension, I think, for us because, again, I absolutely know and would want our wrestlers to be, to have the opportunity to be with their teammates, to be with their coaches. I know how important it is. And I would, I would like to create that opportunity, but I'm not comfortable recommending that the sport, the actual act of wrestling go forward in this environment. So when I say I think we should put all sports on the list, I think we should. We know already that there are some school districts in our county that are not moving forward with wrestling at all. There are others that are still trying to decide what to do. And I think there are some that are indicating they will move forward with it. So there's, there's every option. What I'm suggesting is that although we put it on the list, we put it on the list so that our team can gather, they can continue working out as they have, they can get the the rewards of being with their teammates and their coaches and the physical exercise that comes and the benefits that come with that, but stop short of actually engaging in the act of wrestling, which I know for many will mean, well, that's not in fact wrestling, but to me, it's as, as close as we can get in a, in a reasonable manner in this environment. And that's where I talk again about trying to strike that reasonable balance. So that's my recommendation. I'm, I'm not a health expert. I'm a school superintendent, trying to make a balanced recommendation. And certainly open to questions, discussions about that, and then we move forward.
Thank you, Andrew.
Sure.
Appreciate the update and the insight and your recommendation, of course. So let's pause. Do board members have clarifying questions, comments? Please, Terrence.
Yeah. So I just want to kind of make sure I'm understanding this. So you're saying hockey would move forward, all practices and games? And require mask wearing, is that right?
Yeah.
Then basketball, same thing, all practices and games and require mask wearing?
Correct.
And then wrestling would be workouts only, no actual wrestling even in practice and no attending meets?
Correct. And, and, and masks would be worn during the workouts. And we wouldn't be attending the meets because that's the, and we wouldn't be wrestling because that's when the masks cannot be worn.
Okay. Can, just one other quick question just popped into my head. Is there, can you gauge even a ballpark in terms of number of students impacted per sport?
We're fortunate to have Chris McCarthy with us. He'll be able to give you a better sense of that than I can. Thanks, Chris. Chris, unmute.
Give you the most recent number on, on final forms, if you just give me one second. Okay, so in the sport of boys' basketball, there's currently forty-four student athletes hoping to try out. In the sport of boys' ice hockey, there are twenty-five students looking to try out. In the sport of wrestling, there are twenty-eight currently registered. And girls' basketball, there's currently twenty-two registered. And in girls' ice hockey, there's currently one registered. We do anticipate some late registrations for, so each of those numbers could climb, probably another five or so kids, maybe. On an average. So we do expect that that registration will, because we know, I know kids have different sports and there's a number of hockey kids that weren't listed yet. There was a couple of basketball kids that weren't registered. So we do anticipate wrestling being up over thirty from that perspective. And ice hockey, probably twenty-eight, something in that range.
So can I, sorry. Sorry, Liz, can I just get this out of my head? I'm, I'm going to forget. I'm really sorry. Anything from the fall that we've learned in terms of anything you can share about the transmissions that we've registered in the district as related to anything related to sports? That might give us a little kind of guidance in terms of what shapes your comfort level with this current kind of idea?
We, we didn't have any cases directly traced to sports teams from that, from that. We have had quarantines that have been implemented for positive cases as part of contact tracing. But we have not, we don't have proof of transmission from one athlete to another at this stage.
So if I could just follow up on the, the number of participants question, so that's the number of people who have registered to try out. What are the number of, of students who could actually play?
For each team?
Yeah.
Well, you're gonna, it's, it's gonna it's, well, part of what we do is we look at the whole picture. So, you know, if you think about any of our teams that are traveling, to be on a single bus for a larger team, we can carry twenty-three student athletes and a coach as a way. So it kind of gives us, we, we try to stay within those parameters because then you need multiple people on multiple buses for every event. So I would, that being said, we're probably looking at in the range of anywhere from, you know, hockey could be anywhere from eighteen to twenty-two. Basketball will probably closer to twelve per program, per team, per level. Girls' basketball right now falls under that, that number. I think they're right around that twenty, I think they were twenty-two, if I remember. So they're going to be, they're twenty-two, so they're, they're going to be right in that ballpark of, you know, that might not even require cuts.
Chris.
I thought you just said twelve.
But let's clarify, we're talking about a varsity team and a JV team, twelve per team.
Yeah, so we're got, for the sport of basketball, we're, we're running both varsity and JV. So that'd be in the range of twenty-four student athletes between the two. It could be, you know, plus a couple more, you know, from that perspective. And then we're looking at hockey will probably be in the range of eighteen to twenty-two. It depends on where that cutoff will be. So that kind of gives you an idea. Wrestling, numbers can climb because of ability to provide competition. So we, in the past, we haven't cut in the sport of wrestling. We welcomed all wrestlers and were able to create that. Would, could that look different if we were in a different scenario? Possibly yes. Because we, there's a very limited schedule that's going to be out there and they'd be matching up like-size teams in order to, for them to wrestle. So that could be slightly lower than the number you're seeing.
So if you include wrestling, you're looking at about a hundred students?
Oh, between the, between the teams, yeah, you're up, you're going to be up north right around there, yeah. A little bit more.
Thank you. Yes, Bill.
You guys would probably prefer if I stayed on mute. In terms of the infection from the sport, short of doing DNA testing, there's no way to show where a given student got it from. So I wouldn't take that as evidence that it's safe. I'd take that as evidence that we didn't do DNA testing to ascertain that. As you could probably expect, I, I, I fully understand the twin interests here. That there's, there's sort of physical well-being and emotional well-being. I still come out on the side of life and death. And this is a, can be a fatal illness. I think an apt analogy would be the number of people dying every day is about nine or ten, full airliners going down a day. So there's, there's thousands of flights, nine or ten go down a day. Would we be sending kids on field, elective field trips on airplanes? I doubt it. I doubt it. We would say, gee, that, that, that sounds risky. We shouldn't be doing that. That's how I look at this. And what pushes me over the edge, I'm not sure if this will help anybody else. What pushes me over the edge is, it's not just about these student athletes. This decision affects the, not even the school community, it affects the entire community. I, I feel that's who we're elected to represent, the entire community. I don't think it's fair to expose people to increased risk. Another tiebreaker for me is, we're just hearing about new variants that might have increased transmissibility. So all the math we did in the fall may or may not be applicable. There's some concern that one of the variants might not be as susceptible to the vaccine as we thought. So I, I'm on the side of no. Even I, I guess what I would think is important to the discussion at least, is, I don't know, maybe refresh our memories about what the precautions are in these sports. And the important question of did it really happen in the fall? If, if somebody walked by the practice, you know, fifteen times in, over the season, would they have been pleased by what they see? And is, is that one of the things that gives you comfort? Is that that worked well or didn't work well?
So to answer that, I would say our teams I was very impressed with. And we monitored them pretty tightly. We had three of us, four of us actually, that were in and out of practice on a regular basis. They utilized the entire field. They did break up into cohorts. Now, granted, I, I say that lightly because eventually you're scrimmaging at some point during that practice and the cohorts mix. But they tried to limit the number of times that they were crossing over, and we would continue that practice moving forward. So I think from our perspective, we were very pleased with the compliance of our student athletes, the, the leadership of our coaches. Now, with that being said, I wouldn't be honest if I told you that every school we faced followed the same level of protocols. Did I stop games in the middle of the game and call both teams together and say, if the, if you do not wear your mask, the game is over? I did. And the other team complied when we, when we did do that. So you, some schools are incredibly diligent about it. Some schools are less diligent about it. So that's just a reality of our competition and every community is different. But I was very, I was thrilled with the work our coaches did. I really, I thought they were, they were an example.
That's very reassuring. Thank you for that. And thank you for, it sounds like a very unpopular thing to do, but the right thing to do. I guess my, my final question is really more I want, I want to sort of see how this would play out because I anticipate this might come up. So one of the things in the forums is saying that if I'm playing on a team, one of the things I'm agreeing to is to not go to parties and do other things that will increase my risk. So, you know, it's a hundred students. There's a chance that one of them is at a party somewhere over a weekend. Somebody has a picture of it. What do we do? What would be your, your steps on that? And how seriously are we taking that commitment? Because again, the decision to go to the party is affecting the eighty-eight-year-old person who lives next door. I sort of, I, I want to see, I wanted to find out a little bit more about, because what you see that, how that, how that would play out.
I'll, I'll speak to that a little bit, Bill. Christian and I have both worked in schools long enough to go back to the days when contracts were that much more common for athletes. They were then about more about partying and drinking and driving and that kind of thing. And, you know, this is a new level of seriousness, I would say, connected to similar behavior. And you're right. It was always very challenging to prove in the old, in the old days, I'll say. A little less so now with all the evidence that people can provide us. So we would certainly take it very, very seriously, and we would have the whole range of disciplinary consequences in front of us. We don't typically speak to without an actual incident, what exactly the discipline would be, but it would range from suspension from the team for a period of time to being removed entirely from the team to more seriously, perhaps being suspended for a period of time from school. That, that would roughly be the range of consequences. I can't speak to which specific one it would be for a specific incident without having actual. But I, I think it's fair to say that we all recognize how serious this environment is. And we would need to enforce it seriously so that we would continue to have the kind of compliance that Christian just described.
Okay. I appreciate that. And I'll, I'll stop in a second. I also want to acknowledge that this isn't an easy decision. I, I do not mean to suggest that this is obvious. I think I was a little bit more vehement in the fall. I don't want to suggest that this is obvious and there's a clear right and wrong. I, I still don't think I can get to yes, but I understand that this is a very tough decision. I don't want to acknowledge that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Rory.
Thank you, Marjorie. I, I guess I, I share Bill's concerns about the physical welfare. And I know we've ran some good sports programs in the fall and based on the evidence. Maybe it's scant evidence, but based on the evidence, it seems like they were successful and we did not pass on the virus through those contacts. Although, as Bill points out, we don't really know whether, whether that occurred or not. I, I'll just be wide open here. I, I'm a member of the ice hockey community in our district. My son plays ice hockey and he's actually trying out for the varsity team, so I kind of have vested interests here. So I'll just share that openly. But my concern really truly is around the the way in which certain ice rinks in our district are operating. And perhaps it's true of other buildings that are hosting our sports teams. And I would just like to hear what assurances we may have that we're limiting the number of people who are at those venues that were appropriately following the right protocols, that were enforcing protocols, I believe. I'm not sure about Westchester County. I think the state has said that for indoor sports, there are no spectators permitted. And so I'm kind of just interested about how we intend to ensure that all of the appropriate protocols are being enforced if we decide to go ahead.
So as we work with, the entire section is working with these arenas. So there's a large number of us that are part of the Brewster Sports Center in the sport of ice hockey. Not having fans is something they're okay with. They will follow through with whatever the section mandates and of course, what the DOH puts in place. They've been incredibly supportive from that perspective. You know, I think our biggest challenge around it is locker rooms. When it comes to the sport of ice hockey, that's where they meet to, you know, talk, you know, in between periods. And you're also getting to a place that's not as cold, right? Because the athletes are going from sweating on the ice but being comfortable, but then they kind of go into the locker room. They're not in a cold area and they're able to, you know, go over strategy and whatever they do, and then they come back out after the ice cut, and then they're good to go again. There is some concern about not allowing them a space that has that ability to, of a change in temperature. Because, you know, but we're pretty confident that these kids manage this pretty well when it comes to the hockey world that they live in now. The other part is changing. That's another obviously big concern. Will there be enough peace in place that a team could go in and change X number of student athletes at a time, come out and take the ice? That's probably where we would go and they would be cleaning in between each team use. So that's one of those things because it's pretty difficult for ice hockey players on a regular basis, especially for games, to show up ready to go. And then find a place to sit down and put their skates on. It's really a little more complicated with the amount of equipment they have. So I do anticipate the locker rooms being our biggest challenge, and that's something that we're going to continue to work on and figure out. But we don't foresee a scenario where there's eighteen to twenty kids in the locker room getting dressed together like they did, you know, a year ago. We, we, we foresee something that looks a lot, very, very different. To, to that point, we have not even opened the locker rooms here at John Jay. So we're not even, you lot, kids are coming changed. And when it comes to games, we'll have to figure something out with small numbers. But right now, those locker rooms are remaining closed. So that's our biggest concern about it, is the meeting space, the changing space. The sport itself, although I guess technically you are inside, it does have a little bit different feel from a basketball program. You know, being inside, I think the issues with hockey come once you go into those small team meetings. You know, so we had an open ice, we try to spread kids out, we'll continue those practices. A, a team meeting won't be A, a, a team meeting won't be a tight huddle like you've seen in the past. We're going to have to have a new, a new spin on it in order to keep it safe. You know, in the sport of basketball, we'll be staggering our chairs forward and back um, in the gym, uh, where there's space or space, space them out along the walls much further. So that kids aren't sitting, uh, on top of one another. That was one of our biggest challenges from the fall. Is as coaches would be keep pushing athletes and spraying them out. And then as the game go on, they'd slowly try to creep in because they're getting excited about the game and then we'd have to do it again. Um, so we think in sport like basketball, we're going to set the chairs and they're not going to be permitted to move them. So that would be a little easier.
And I assume, Chris, I guess my question was really trying to get to how will we make sure that our team are wearing masks, are not going in the locker rooms, are changing before they get to the rink, are the parents are not coming in? Who's going to referee that? It can't be the coaches of the basketball teams or the, or the ice hockey teams. How do, how do we make sure that those are being followed?
So, I mean, as far as the supervision of it, little different because we're more spread out when we're talking about this particular season because we're at different places. But I can tell you myself, Jeff Curtis are all over the place. The athletic trainer is in and out. Um, as we, I'll probably be assigning, um, head chaperones to particular areas to help with that. So we have additional supervision, additional, additional adults in areas so that, um, we can help constantly reinforce and cross check. Uh, the coaches know I'm, I'm very serious about it. Um, I will stop a game. I will stop a practice. I will send people home. And I, even like you said, it's not necessarily popular, but if it means the season happening or the season not happening. Right. Take that stand and, you know, to, to make it possible for kids to participate.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Chris. That's helpful. Thank you.
Other comments, questions?
Uh, if I could just, I, I've got a couple of comments. Um, you know, I, I do tend to kind of align with Bill on, um, on, you know, whether or not we do these things, just because you know, the consequences, even if, you know, the likelihood is small or serious enough, that gives me a real pause. Um, you know, we did go ahead and have a reasonably successful fall season, but all of those sports were outside. Um, and I think that, you know, one consistent, you know, theme that we've heard since this pandemic began is that things are a lot better outside than they are inside. Um, and so just from, from the, the perspective of the downside being catastrophic for potentially one family or community member, um, is enough to make me think this isn't important enough to take the risk. Um, secondly, you know, if we're looking at just a hundred students, it's once again, we're doing something for the benefit of 3% of our student body. Um, that the other students aren't getting, but potentially also shouldering the risk from. Now, you know, I know, I, I don't like, you know, to disappoint students and teenagers. Um, but I find that with three teenagers of my own, that's pretty much all I do from the second I get up in the morning to the end of the day. Um, and so, you know, it, it is my judgment as somebody who has to worry about every student in the district and every teacher and every, um, support staff member and every bus driver. Um, but this just does not make sense to me. And so that's where I'm going to come out on it. It's not just wrestling. It's, you know, I think about basketball and I, I think, you know, I, I don't know if that is appreciably better than wrestling. Um, and so, you know, my inclination is I, I just, I haven't heard anything that, that kind of makes me think, oh, well, maybe we can do this safely. And it just seems like so many resources and so much effort. Um, with, you know, really kind of very limited upside here.
Thank you, Liz.
I just, I just want to acknowledge, we do it in the meetings all the time. As Christian was going through it, I think we also, I want to acknowledge not as a way, either a sway, either way, is the extraordinary effort that is going into this. I mean, we've talked about the teachers and the remote teaching and not remote and, and the extreme effort. It sounds like in order to pull this off in the fall, it took an extraordinary amount of work and dedication. I think that's, that's very admirable to do it basically for the benefit of the kids.
Thank you, Bill. Julia, I think you were waiting to say something.
I mean, I think I just want to reiterate for the community, how difficult of a decision this is for us. I mean, it's, it's for some of us, it's personal, you know, Rory's a hockey community member. I'm a wrestling community member. So this is, this is both a, uh, I have to put on my board of education hat and the entire community that we represent. And I, I'm not supposed to bring my parent hat necessarily to this obligation. It's challenging not to. Um, I can speak only from as, that I do think the opportunity for kids to be with their coaches and with their teammates in some fashion is very valuable. And I think, um, I do that same math. I literally was doing the math of 3%, but I was thinking about this last night and thinking, you know, we have many programs that benefit a small number of students, whether it's science Olympiad or, um, you know, certain opportunities that not every student avails them to or, or interest them. But for those students, for each of them as individuals, the value of that activity is, is really significant. And as a parent of one of those students, I imagine that for those students, they really feel like for their child's wellbeing, it's important to have that opportunity. So I try to, you know, look through that lens of while it is of, you know, a very small percentage of our total student population, for each of those individual students, this is really important to them. And, um, does have a very positive impact on them. So, you know, I definitely weigh both, all of those things. Um, I like the idea of students having the opportunity to at least practice. Um, uh, you know, I know that we're, at, at this point, the recommendation is that that would only be in our wrestlers, but I wonder if, you know, if there's some thinking about that across all the sports, you know, they could scrimmage against each other. I get that it's not the same, but we also have a super short season. Um, you know, I don't know how much competition is even going to be available in a, you know, once they fulfill their practice requirements, how many games they're actually going to have. And maybe knowing that, like scrimmaging within the team is enough.
I, I could kind of fill you in on all that information. So right now they're looking at a potential 10 to 12 game schedule for the sports that had, um, normally have a 20 game and that's so, you're looking at basketballs would, would, would fall in that category. Um, ice hockey will be probably maybe slightly less than that just because of ice time and how concentrated it is. Um, but then there would be some form of culminating activity regionally, like we did in the fall. On part of the, um, the committee that actually created the regional, uh, workout, the regional playoffs that are taking place. It's not a traditional sectional championship, uh, like you saw in the sport of soccer, they ended up being, I think, uh, six or eight champions regional, within regions, uh, based on school size and based on where their, um, their BOSI, what BOSIs they were tied to kind of created the lines of demarcation for the different schools. Um, and so you saw that spread out. So it did limit, so we didn't participate with Rockland. We didn't participate, um, with many schools way up north like we normally do. Um, but in full disclosure, that will change as we move towards the football season and things like that. Because the number of schools change that are available to us because it's based on classification. So you do have to be prepared for that. Um, the, it is set up to be a mini season with some form of culminating event. I can tell you it was a very powerful experience for kids, um, from us watching them, the appreciation they had, the participation they had, the, and you know, some of the great success that we had, our boys soccer program, you know, completely changed the, you know, the plight of that program, which for many years was middle of the road or sometimes struggled. They elevated to a completely new place. So it was a pretty incredible run to watch. And the kids and parents who, although they had to watch most of it via live stream, um, had an experience that they'll remember forever during these difficult times. I do want to be clear about practice. Um, because practice isn't what you would normally call practice under the out of season guidelines. So for instance, we've been, we ran open gym last night. That is everyone socially distanced at all times. Every athlete in basketball has their own ball. They do not pass to another player. They can dribble, do dribbling drills, shooting drills. They must get their own rebounds, but they can't do so right next to another person doing the same thing. So it is very, very different. In the sport of wrestling, you wouldn't actually be putting a move on someone because there would be nobody there. Um, in that, in that setup. So we do want to be clear that that is a very kids are impacted by that. And the experience is not like, you know, if it was kind of like what Julia said, hey, they're running normal practices, they're wrestling every day and then they're scrimmaging amongst themselves. That's a, that is something that could happen, but you'd have to approve them to have that contact with one another, even if it wasn't with other schools. Um, are there ways to work that? Yeah, it could be limited to who you wrestle, you know, in a given practice in the space that you utilize. Absolutely, that could happen. Um, and you wouldn't cross over like they normally do in wrestling practice. Um, but when it comes to the actual competition, that's where it, it really differs. If they're, uh, practicing in a normal day, yes, they'll be spread out. They'll be doing different things, but they'll come in time during that practice where they're going to scrimmage, they're going to run plays, they're going to prepare like they would normally for a game. And I think when you run a out of season practice, that does all get eliminated. Because you can't have that, anyone guarding anyone. You can't have any contact between athletes.
Thank you for clarifying, Christian. Um, while we're just gathering our thoughts here toward the end of our board conversation, I do want to invite community members to feel free to please use the Q and A at the bottom of the Zoom screen. In a few moments, we will turn our attention to public forum and will allow time for, um, questions and comments in the Q and A before we vote on the resolution that we have before us this evening. So we're just going to slightly modify the, um, order of events that you might see on your agenda with the board's permission, um, and with Kim's assistance. Thank you. Um, so I did just want to be sure that any community members who were waiting to share a comment or question should please feel free to do so. Please identify yourself. We're not able to read anonymous, um, comments into the public record. Thank you so much.
Andrew, can I ask just one more question?
Yeah.
With the new, um, quarantining requirements, um, and some flexibility in terms of like not having to quarantine an entire classrooms. Um, is that something that? My concern is that like, if you had one team that had something happen and there's 10 kids from that team in a school, that, you know, we would just shut down many, many classrooms potentially if those kids were in class. Are we able to do just like where it's certain kids that are around them or is it still the whole classroom? I apologize for not keeping up with this.
It's, it's, it is, it's no longer the whole classroom. It is the new guidance is about a, speaks to a six foot perimeter around the student. It's not always easy to know for certain who's been within that six foot perimeter. So we are on the side of caution. Uh, but generally speaking, the numbers have been lower. The numbers of students quarantining have been lower since the new guidance came out. And I think, I think we also just have to honestly acknowledge there's still not that many students in the high school on a given day by their own choice. Well, you know, we still hope for them to come and would like them to come, but they're choosing not to come. So it's also possible that students wouldn't be uh, dealing with quarantine because the cases may be, the, the athletes, the athletes may be dealing with the quarantine, but it may not be impacting the school as much. We've seen that situation even recently.
And I guess one other, this is really just a comment, but I guess, um, if we go ahead with sports, I think it would be really important for our coaches to really, really impress upon the student athletes the importance of their compliance outside of school and outside of sports. Um, this is something that if we allow this as a board, if we approve it through vote, we're trusting them to not be in social situations on mass outside of school. Cause we know that we can manage them and we did this in the fall in terms of their practice. But my anecdotal information that many of the cases that have happened have been outside of the sports environments and outside of the school environment. And I think we are potentially introducing a significant risk that we are balancing with a, a reward for the students that this is really important to. And that's a privilege that they need to take very seriously. So I don't know how much we can just really ask the coaches to just continually impress upon them how important that will be.
I, I think that's been an area of focus because kids have to understand their decision to do something will knock out their, you know, their team from participating. And what, what I'd also say is that something we would take very seriously. And this is happening at the top colleges in, across the country. I, I just got an example last night when I was on a Zoom with, uh, University of Oregon for my daughter's lacrosse team. She shared that the men's program, they had very clear rules that you couldn't, when your parents come, you cannot be with them. You cannot go to lunch, dinner with them. You, you have to, because you've been on boarded and you've been quarantined. So when the parents came in, they took all the basketball players out to pra, out to breakfast and hung out with them. And the university shut the team down. And that's a top 20 program in the country, you know, e- every year. And so people are taking it very serious and we would do similar things here. If we felt that there was, this was something widespread, we would shut a team down at a moment's notice. And that is simply because of what it jeopardize, how much it jeopardizes, you know, for all athletes, for all community members and all, um, you know, the people that we may come in contact with. So we will, that will be a constant. And, um, I think that the coaches are understanding and, and I would like to say I'm pretty comfortable that the absolute vast majority, if not all of our kids truly feel that it's a privilege to get the opportunity to play right now after what they haven't been able to do for so long.
There's, there's one other element also that I'd like to just speak to, even though it's kind of a moot point for us, but the board will hear about it in other places. So I want to make sure you hear about it here too, which is the idea of testing. Uh, which is it's, it's mentioned in the guidance. It's not mentioned extensively, but there is a reference that school districts could choose to test, do, yeah, um, rapid COVID tests of their student athletes as another layer of security. Uh, you will hear that some districts are choosing to do that. They have the tests available to them. Other districts don't have the tests available and are not doing it for that reason. Other districts may have the tests available for their, for their school population. They know that they're in limited supply and they're debating right now whether using them for athletes makes sense versus having them available for a percentage of the school population in order to try to keep schools open should the numbers go up and testing be required. So there's some calculus around that also. We've, we've requested the tests that are available to us, we believe from Westchester County. We have not yet received word that we will, that they'll be available to us. Uh, and, and we suspect that might be because we, we've heard that the supplies are fluctuating. And they may not be as readily available as they once were, but we have certainly requested them. And if they become available, then we'll be engaged in that debate too of whether to use them with athletes, uh, versus using them on the whole population. But at the moment we don't have them, so it's not an issue.
Can I just ask one more question? I apologize. Um, what is our recourse if we see rising numbers and we make an assumption that that is in some way a result of this? I mean, in the same way that we're approving them now, can, do we have the authority to stop them?
Yes, at any time, we have the authority to make a decision to stop the sports moving forward.
And the DOH has made that very clear as well. So, you know, that locally, regionally, they'll, they will shut areas down. And of course, you have the same authority.
Thank you. Yes, Catherine, please.
Um, so I feel really reassured that, uh, the sport, the athletic department and our administration seems to be so on top of literally the unknown. I recognize the, the unknown of, of this and, um, the life or death type situations that we're encountering and recognize that the comfort level is drastically different from one family to the next. I mean, forget, you know, playing a sport, but whether you want your child to actually even get into this, go into the school. Comfort levels go from one extreme to the up to the next and we have to be um, comfortable and respectful of all of those comfort levels. I, I recognize that we're talking about life and death here. I personally would love to see the sports move forward. I think that we're also talking about the mental health of our children, which I believe is becoming also a life or death situation in certain instances. which I believe is becoming also a life or death situation in certain instances. And I um, I think that from what I've heard from Christian, what I've heard from Andrew, I tend to want to move forward and stay on top of it, on top of it as closely as we can and continue to honor it on a daily basis, on an hourly basis. But that's where I met up right now.
Marjorie, can I just ask a few uh, quick questions?
Sure, please.
So uh, we're not talking about modified, right? Only JV and varsity?
Correct.
Um, we're not talking about any crowds, so only athletes and coaches in, in competition?
Yes, the only um, thing that has come up, which has not been approved at this point is to do a senior, senior event, one senior event um, per, per team, but that has not been approved by the Department of Health at this point.
Right, so right now, if we, if you went into a schedule, the, the understanding is no crowds, just athletes and coaches and maybe there's something at the end.
Anything that's inside will have no crowds.
Got it. Okay. And then um, do we know of any districts in our region that are opting out? Are most of them in and like, what's that situation look like?
So it depends on the sport. I can tell you that um, I've heard when it comes, in regards to basketball, um, I've, just about every school I've heard of is in. When it comes to ice hockey, it, it's less programs that have ice hockey. But there are, majority of them are in, there are a couple of large merge teams that are not taking place. They've opted out of doing the larger merge uh, with the different schools. Uh, but the other main programs are happening. The sport of wrestling about, at, at this stage of the game, about one third of the schools who offer wrestling are opting out. Um, and I'd probably say about another third are undecided and are on the fence and looking for information and guidance or kind of going back and forth. They haven't made a final decision, similar to where we are. And then there's probably another third that are saying they're going to go ahead with it and it may end up being less than that. So it's, it's hard to, it's hard to really quantify because we had every, every couple of hours, another school might bow out. Um, so, but we're not at the half the number of schools yet. But um, it could get there in, between now and the weekend.
And our position in wrestling, is that technically an in or an out right now? Because it's like engaging but not doing meets.
So it's an out.
Okay, it's an out. Okay. So I mean, I, I'll just make a quick comment, just say that, you know, I've said this before. Um, all of this is about strategic risk management. It's, it seems to me that um, Andrew and Christian and the administration are, are balancing every detail and are thinking uh, about the greater interests of the community as well as the students and the student athletes in particular. Um, so you know, I, I, I trust in their judgment. It has, it has not failed us so far. So I trust in your judgment.
No pressure.
Thank you.
I wanna, I wanna share another detail again, because I don't want anything to come out later that would surprise anybody. So Christian, just a minute ago, referenced a couple of large merged ice hockey teams that are not going to go forward. Christian, I'm assuming those are boys' ice hockey mergers among several schools. So our, our boys' ice hockey team is a standalone program, it's not a merged team. But we are uh, looking at the prospect of a startup girls' ice hockey program that is a merged sport. And we're including that tonight in our recommendation to move forward. Um, the thinking there being, um, and it's another, it's another calculus. So girls' ice hockey has not been an official sport in the same capacity as boys' ice hockey for uh, a number of years, for, forever. And there's been an initiative to try to get it off the ground for a couple of years. So in this case, we're thinking about it from an equity perspective. That if there, if at some point in the future, there's going to be a girls' ice hockey program, then it has to begin somewhere. And so our thinking is, it's not a large number of girls, it's three or four or five, I think at the moment. And that could change, I'm sure Christian would say, I don't think it would go up, I think it could only go down if anything. But we do want to be transparent and say that is a, a sport that we would bring together girls from, I think, five or six different schools, Christian, is that about right?
And they, and they would compete against similar groups of schools. You know, there are schools that have opted out of that, uh, but there are a lot of schools that are opting in to still be part of it. So yeah, you're talking about five, six schools per team because there's just not the numbers to support that. The one caveat that it, you know, women's ice hockey has some different rules than men's ice hockey. Uh, checking being one of them. So I, I would kind of look at ice hockey similar to lacrosse, boys and girls across, where boys across is a little more physical than girls across. I would say that boys' ice hockey is more physical, there's more contact uh, than you would see in, in girls' ice hockey. I know uh, there's some people on this would probably even know better than me because they're true hockey people. But I think that does change the, the piece a little bit when you're talking about even us being with other teams.
Marjorie, I just have one last comment if I may, because I feel I'd be remiss if I didn't repeat something that I'd said back and forth when we were trying to decide what to do about fall sports. And that's simply that the majority of these athletes are pretty high level athletes, they're about as good as we have in this area. And for basketball and ice hockey and wrestling, that, that's pretty high level. And therefore, most of them are already playing on club teams and are already participating with their teams, are already on the ice. If we choose not to go forward, I believe that all of those athletes or the majority of those athletes will be participating someplace else outside of our governance without all of the precautions that we're uh, hoping to implement. And so to me, the safer of the two options is actually to go forward with uh, higher risk winter sports. Because if we choose not to, we lose the control over the entire environment and these kids are not going to stay home. They're going to be playing ice hockey and basketball and possibly wrestling uh, without our governance. So I just wanted to reiterate that. I did mention that when we talked about soccer and JV in the fall. I, I think it still holds true.
Thanks for the reminder, Rory. Any other comments, questions at this time? We certainly can come back for a brief discussion after we hear from public forum. And so perhaps we should transition to public forum. Thank you so much to Christian and Andrew for setting the table and for the overview and the updates as we've gone along in this discussion. Um, and I think when you're ready, Kim, with your assistance, I'll suggest that we move on to public forum now. Thank you.
Thank you, Marjorie. There are no um, comments to our board public forum email. So I will begin with the Q and A comments. So the first comment is from Luba Y Gardner. The percentage of kids getting sick during outside sports and masked at school are very small. Maybe you should let parents decide if their kids will participate. If private clubs can do it, so should the schools. Because this will only hurt children whose parents can't afford a private club. The next comment is from Leah Pizer. Most John Jay High School kids are not attending school in person and are not, and are not impacting the school community in a significant way. What is the actual risk to the student population slash employees? As a contact tracer, community support specialist in New York State, we are not seeing COVID spread via sports on any significant level. With respect to the comment of not having sports only impacting three percent of the students, that is an illegal slippery slope to start only doing things that benefit a majority. The next comment is from Mark and Jill Atnell. How can, how can we be sure these other schools will follow the same guideline, guidelines we will when it comes to a merged team? Then another comment is from Carrie Wolf. Thank you for all of your thoughtful comments. My daughter, a senior, has successfully participated in two seasons of sports so far this year. I do not have a child contemplating one of these higher risk sports, but I would love to see our district offer them. As Catherine mentioned, I believe the mental health of our students is crucial to consider. I have also observed that most of our student athletes are choosing to attend school remotely to ensure that they don't miss precious days of their shortened season for contact tracing. As much as my daughter loves being in school as often as she can, she is currently making the difficult decision to stay home to ensure her season goes forward. I have faith that the athletes for basketball, ice hockey and wrestling would do the same for any semblance of a s- season they should, they could have. And the last comment is from Liz Katz Gonzalez. Thank you Catherine for bringing up the mental health of the student athletes. It is so important with the increase of mental health issues with high school students around the country. One of, one or more students that this affects is one or more that we need to keep in mind. This is many of their, this is many of their only outlet. And at the time, Marjorie, the board, that is the only comments that I have.
Terrific. Thank you so much for reading those uh, into the public record, Kim. And thanks very much to members of the community who joined us tonight and for sharing your thoughts and comments and observations. You know, I think we've discussed many of the challenges associated with making a decision in this environment. Some of the challenges are familiar because we had conversation in the fall around our fall sports season. I think we really appreciate your responsiveness and thoroughness, Andrew and Christian, um, you know, even as these guidelines changed and um, changed the landscape for our high risk winter sports in the past couple of days. And also even as we move forward from one season to the next, which is to say that at the beginning of the year, we were talking about, you know, if we are to move forward with our sports seasons, then can you please find ways to also create opportunity for junior varsity athletes? And you know, you've done that and now here we are potentially creating those opportunities for higher risk sports in indoor environments, which does seem counterintuitive. Um, which is, you know, something Andrew pointed out at the beginning of this conversation, there are many seemingly contradictory and somewhat counterintuitive um, factors to be held in mind uh, at the same time. So I appreciate all of the discussion, both from our board, from Andrew, Christian, from our community. I don't know whether anybody's waiting to add anything further to the discussion and if not, you know, I think we can vote on the resolution that's been prepared. We have something in front of us uh, that I can read out loud into the public record. And if I understand correctly, we would be um, voting on a resolution to move forward with boys and girls basketball, uh, boys and girls ice hockey, from what I'm hearing, uh, wrestling. And I think I have that. That's complete, that's the list, correct? Did I miss something? Or, or is, you know, if somebody wanted to modify the resolution or suggest we have a resolution with a subset of sports, I guess that would be an option. But I think the recommendation I heard Andrew made was that we would be voting on a resolution for all of those higher risk sports.
Just, I just want to add again though, for clarity's sake, it's wrestling with an asterix. Um, and this, this was a discussion among some superintendents earlier today, whether or not to include wrestling on the list. If, because other, other schools are considering a similar approach that uh, allowing the workouts masked but not actual wrestling. As Christian points out, from the league's perspective, we won't be participating in wrestling. But we're including it on our list because we want our wrestlers to have the opportunity to work with their coaches and work out uh, here at school.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Understood. Okay, so um,
Marjorie, can I ask a quick question? So just to be clear, if um, it's going to be girls and boys basketball, varsity and JV? Right, we should be specific in that? And then it's just boys and girls ice hockey? Is there a JV or a varsity with that? No? And wrestling is?
Well, re- wrestling would fall into out of season workouts, not, they wouldn't, we, we wouldn't be forming a um, varsity or a junior varsity.
I just want to make sure we have the right um, verbiage when we do the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask one thing regarding the um, wrestling workout language? Could it allow single person turn, I don't know how you would word it, but that each kid on the wrestling team could have one person that they would be permitted to do drills with, but no, like no crossover outside of that, or is that like open up risks that people aren't comfortable?
So there is a scenario where that can happen and you still wouldn't compete against other schools. Um, kind of the way it would, would be set up, they'd be in uh, small pods uh, based on weight class and you'd be training with one other athlete. On that day, you wouldn't be training with any other athlete. So that would enable them to at least do drills that would be wrestling type to improve skillset and things like that. I don't think you'd be able to do that without it, just to make it clear.
Christian, just to be sure, I heard what you said right, you said on that day, would that, should I take from that, that it's possible they might change their athletic partner on some other day or would they be?
I, I think what you, yeah, I think what you'd probably look at is the number of kids within a weight class or like weight classes, meaning maybe one up or one down uh, that you'd match them up. So it, it could be done a couple of ways. So we have to also be mindful that let's say on this day, you know, little Chris didn't come in today and now my partner's gone. Now what are we doing with that student athlete? Are they going solo that day? These would be all things that would have to be figured out. Or do you create pods, which is kind of what we do with other sports? In that you might train with a really small pod and that might include four people, it might include two people. It's really what you would permit. That would then allow a little bit of work within that's very, very small group, but they wouldn't be with anybody else. So there's two ways to look at it. Just kind of putting it all out there. Because I don't want, like Andrew said, the biggest thing that in our conversations is we don't want any surprises. We don't want anyone to feel like we tried to hoodwink them to get something to happen. We want to be very transparent, we want to be very clear what each of these things mean. Um, I think all of your points have been spot on from the health side, both physically and emotionally. Um, they're all very, very real um, and impact and the kids are very, very um, tied into every decision that goes their way in order to provide opportunity. And they, you know, but they also have to realize the bigger picture like Bill brings up of, about our community. So it's um, it's super challenging.
Chris, to, just to clarify something, in the, in the wrestling workouts that you just described, the students would now not be wearing masks because they'd be engaging in wrestling. Is that accurate or not?
Yeah, so that, that becomes the, and, and Andrew and I talked about this earlier. So the, the information we're getting from something like in a true wrestling match um, from the Academy Pediatrics, like you stated before, was that the mask could actually become a hazard at some point. Now in a squ- a skills and drills scenario, we, you can control that much more because you could limit what thi- what things that you can do. So that we, in that scenario, we could mask students safely because they wouldn't be in a true wrestling mode because you were certain things you wouldn't permit. You would say this move is not permitted. You know, we're going to focus on X, Y and Z. And you also have the ability to the minute my mask gets moved to stop, like it's almost like you give a tap, like you see tapping out, like they do short, very short drills that they stop. It doesn't have to, it doesn't turn into these long, you know, who, who wins the big wrestling match, except when they were trying to earn the, you know, the top um, the top person in that weight class. Uh, so when we're talking skills and drills, I do believe they could be masked because they wouldn't be in a strenuous competition um, that could find themselves in a position where the mask could become a hazard. That's where I think it differs. Cause you can't stop the actual competition when you're in there. And the kids were more likely to keep pushing through where when you're in a drill format, something's off, you stop the drill and you fix it. Um, uh, that's where I think it would differ.
I guess I thought at the outset, and maybe I misunderstood, I thought that Andrew, you were recommending that we include wrestling in the scope of this resolution with an asterix that would denote that we are not competing against other districts. But I thought you also asked for some latitude to subsequently figure out where this line that we're now talking about was going to be drawn based on how other districts are also looking at wrestling and planning to implement wrestling. Did I misunderstand that or is that what you said?
I think that's fair, you know, we're not, we're not sure. There are other districts that at least verbally have said they want to allow students to have an activity to engage in. They're not comfortable with full blown wrestling. Um, they don't want to compete. And they are trying to figure out, well, what does that mean? You know, is it students just coming in and working out by themselves at six foot distance from other, or is there something? So I, I think that's a So I, I think that's a fair characterization.
So I, I guess I would then just ask whether it's sufficient for tonight to include wrestling in the resolution with the asterix that denotes that we are not competing interscholastically, but that it's to be determined how we are going to run our wrestling practices and where this particular line is going to be drawn. I mean, I'm just asking the question, does that have to be determined here tonight? Do you need the board to weigh in on that? Because if not, then, you know, we can go ahead with this resolution and, and entrust you with that level of decision-making.
I think that last part is the key. If, if the board was going to feel like there was something that we might do within the parameters of a John Jay High School-only wrestling practice that the board might be uncomfortable with, then you would wanna know that tonight. But if you are comfortable saying to us, as long as it's not competition with other schools, we trust that you're going to make good judgments about what's safe and what isn't, then we don't need to discuss that further tonight.
Thank you. So then I really defer to the board. Do you wanna continue to discuss this question? Please, Rory.
Sorry, I was just gonna ask, could we add that, that mask-wearing is mandatory? No, just plastic and mandatory mask-wearing, and I think I'd be okay with that.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? If not, then, Kim, would you like someone to make a motion for this resolution? And I'll read it into the public record? Okay, great. Would somebody like to move the resolution? This is for item 4.02. Thank you, Terrence. Somebody like to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, Rory, thank you. So, um, and Kim, please correct me if you need something else. Given that the county guidance explicitly requires the Board of Education to pass a resolution to authorize participation in high-risk sports, higher-risk sports, please find a model resolution that may be used to authorize the district's participation in those higher-risk sports. Okay, and so here's the resolution. Be it resolved that the board hereby approves student participation in the following higher-risk winter sports, subject to strict adherence to the guidelines and protocols established by state and local health authorities, as well as the rules of Section 1 of the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. And those sports that we will insert will include boys' and girls' varsity and junior varsity basketball, boys' and girls' ice hockey, and wrestling.
And wrestling will be, will have an asterix that we're not competing interscholastically, and there is mandatory mask-wearing.
Correct.
And the girls' ice hockey is a merged team, correct? Okay.
Correct. Be it further resolved that the board hereby directs the superintendent? No, nothing else?
No.
Okay, sorry, that's where the resolution ends.
That's where the resolution ends, yes.
Okay, terrific. So if there is no further comment or discussion, then we can vote?
I, I missed the second. Who was the second on that?
Rory, Rory seconded.
Okay.
Great, so are we ready to vote? Yes, okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, I think that's five, and opposed, nay?
Nay.
Liz?
Okay, five to two. Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have what we need for that resolution, Kim? All set? Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you so much.
Can we have board discussion again, or?
We, well, yes, so, so we've already had our public forum, and I think this brings us now to 6.01, which is an opportunity for board dialogue. So that's where we are. And Liz, perhaps you're waiting to say something?
Oh, I, yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, despite the fact that I voted against this resolution because that is, you know, my personal assessment, I just wanted to reiterate my utmost confidence in the leadership of the district, Mr. Sleznik in particular, and acknowledge all of the hard work that I know that um, Christian has had to do this year to try and, you know, give as many students as possible, as good an experience as possible. So thank you both. Um, you know, I just came to a different conclusion today. But um, that, you know, doesn't mean that we aren't a well-functioning and happy and competent, competently-led district. So thank you again.
Thank you, Liz.
Yes, Julia?
Um, I guess in the, in the vein of the mental health of our student athletes, um, I imagine that there are probably some student athletes that because of um, people who live in their household or because of their own um, health concerns, may not be able to participate. And I actually, given now that we have approved sports, worry about the mental health of those students pretty significantly. Like, that's gonna be a really hard thing for them to not participate in something that is now available to them and to have to know that they can't do that. And there, and I know just in talking to student athletes, they're very torn about harming their families or doing something that they really love. And so I guess I just would really ask that we, um, if there's any way possible to sort of evaluate our current rosters versus past rosters, and if there are students that we know, you know, really normally would be there and they're not, I just wish we could, you know, perhaps be in contact with them in some way and just reassure them that, you know, this season is not a life-determining season for them, that, you know, they have to make the best choice for themselves and their families during this really difficult time. And I, I think it's important to support them.
Thank you for that, Julia. We can work to, to that end.
And I guess I would just um, anticipate that this probably isn't our last conversation for how maybe we will implement sports um, for this year. And it's been, as we all know, a fluid situation. We made a set of decisions in the fall. We're making new decisions here tonight. We'll have additional opportunities in the very near future to make other decisions. So I do really appreciate that we're able to have these thoughtful conversations. We appreciate your leadership, Andrew and Christian, in helping us to know the circumstances and uh, also for being in touch with neighboring districts. We can't make these decisions in a vacuum. And it really is important to know how your counterparts in other schools are um, weighing all of the various factors. And I guess it would be my hope, maybe at some point at the end of this year, that we could also reflect in a more um, retrospective manner on how we create opportunities that ensure um, that we're preserving mental health and engagement for all students, not just our student athletes. We're very lucky that our student athletes have extraordinary advocacy behind their enterprise and um, and that we're able to do what we're doing here tonight. But it's, it's just a different, it's a different um, kind of advocacy for all of those students engaged in other very meaningful activities um, where they're, you know, maybe meeting by Zoom once a month or what have you, um, but not able to be together in person with their functional equivalent of a team. Um, so I, I hope that we will have an opportunity to, to reflect on all of that for the future. You know, should we find ourselves operating in a hybrid environment or a limited manner beyond this year. Are there any other comments or discussion tonight? Uh, I think if not, then we can look ahead to future meetings. And the board is going to meet uh, in an anticipated exec session on Tuesday morning, February 9th. We then have a regularly scheduled board meeting Thursday, the 11th, at 7:30 PM. Finance Committee will meet February 16th, Tuesday, at 7:00 PM. Policy will meet Friday, February 19th, at 9:00 AM. And the board will meet again Thursday, February 25th, at 7:30 PM to begin our budget overview process. And all day on Saturday, beginning at 8:30 AM for a detailed budget review. Did I miss anything? Okay, if not, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Catherine. Moved by Catherine and seconded by Julia. Thank you again, everybody. Really appreciate being able to pull this together tonight. And thanks to our community for joining us. Have a good evening. Stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we need to vote, vote to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you.
Aye.
I'm pretty sure that's seven zero. Thank you. Good night.
Night.
Good night.